Good evening, everyone. Can I have a motion to recommune into open session? Motion by Mr. Tamiya, seconded by Mrs. Malalino. All in favor? Four zero. Everyone please rise for the pledge, and after the pledge, if everyone would remain standing.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This summer, while it's been productive and hopefully filled with lots of fond memories for families, has also been riddled with tragedy in several sub-county school districts. So I'm going to ask everyone present to please offer a moment of silence for the unspeakable loss that has taken place in our district, this agent's position, and the Harbor Fields School District, who all had to say a farewell to students way too soon.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting and regular business meeting of July 6th, 2017? And, um, yes. Oh, we need to present. Okay, we can table for next meeting. The next section will shoot right to board recognition of donations. Can you take that, Mrs. Malalino?
Sure. The board would like to recognize the anticipated donations of the contributing to the sensory room at James H. Boyd Intermediate. The donations were provided by Anthony Lauto from Cambridge Strategies, Honest Audio, Video, and Lighting Company, and the Lighting Gallery of Huntington and Electronic Lighting Accessories, lighting agencies. We appreciate the donations and thank all that help make our district a better place.
Thank you, Mrs. Malalino. I'll hand you over to Dr. Basur for any comments.
I'll be very brief because we have a number of presentation items tonight, but I will report to the board that we are very close to classifying our schools as ready for students. As you know, faculty and staff will be returning on Monday. New teacher orientation will be held in this library on Monday. We have a number of new faculty members we will be introducing, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Powell and the curriculum team, our directors particularly, for putting together what looks like a very healthy agenda for new teacher orientation. On Wednesday and Thursday, we'll have two days of Superintendent's Conference Day. This year's focus for the theme of the day is on the whole child, and teachers and staff will be focusing on activities involving mindfulness, which is a topic that we think will help our students really make school a comfortable environment, try to reduce anxiety, try to reduce stressors, and help teachers to understand the very different baggage that every student walks into a classroom. I think it's important work that we'll be doing. I think that faculty and staff is looking forward to it. We have a well-known facilitator coming to assist us with the presentation, Dr. Cheryl Petty, and I think it's going to be very productive today. And immediately following that day, we'll be joined by some of our best friends who are returning after a long summer, and the buildings look spectacular. Thanks to the team, Mr. McDonald and the custodial and vans teams have really gone above and beyond this summer, taking on some very large projects, which in many places, which would have required outside contractors coming to do it, coming in to complete. For those who noticed on the way into the middle school tonight, the reblacktop surfaces, the repainted parking lines, and all of those improvements were done by our crew. Mr. Pierce is here, I'll offer him personal thanks for taking a leadership role in that. It's all our guys doing work with our equipment and our materials, and it really saves the taxpayers thousands of dollars for whatever it costs to have an outside vendor in, and the place looks tremendous. So I commend the team on their work, and I look forward to thanking them all for answering the late night's day. And that said, much more to discuss tonight, so I'll close there.
It looks like there's one more donation on tab H in the donations that we'd like to approve. That wasn't on the agenda, but is in the tab.
Correct. That is to recommend the board accept the donation of $91.80 funding the Barbara Quigley Memorial Fund, the appropriate revenue and budget. I apologize, it's just to accept the anticipated donation of $91.80 for the Barbara Quigley Memorial Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to echo the thanks to the staff that worked hard over the summer to get ready for the school year, the custodial staff, the administrative staff, and all others that were here during the summer, working hard to prepare for students, and we look forward to our teachers and students' return on the 30th for teachers and after Labor Day for students. So I'm going to open it up for the first residents' remarks. The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and in any organization they represent, comments should be kept as brief as possible and may not accept three minutes. I'll give you a little wave in the hand when we start approaching that three minutes. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibitive. Would anyone like to come speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to our presentation and discussion items.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Creed. While Mrs. Loughlin prepares for the capital bond this week and with the help of some resources we have with us tonight, I just want to give a basic overview to the board and community of where we are in the process. It's my understanding that a discussion of a capital bond dates back at least two years within the district, so significantly before my arrival, when it was identified that the scope of projects that need to be done to improve our facilities exceeds well beyond what we can afford to include in our regular operating budget. Some of the sizing scope just does not allow us to have a tax cap for any budget while getting these projects done. So moving towards the course of a capital bond has been an appropriate conversation that's been taking place for some time, and we're really reaching the point in the process where the board needs to take action to finalize the proposal so that we can present it repeatedly to the public, so that they will be informed voters when we do ask them to go to the ballot box and support or not support the proposal we bring forward. So we have been engaged in a good number of conversations through the facilities committee and Board of Education, and I thank Mr. Tamiya and Mrs. Weiss for taking the lead on that this past year. And there's been some very healthy dialogue that has gotten us to the point where we can have intelligent discussion with the board and finalize a proposal to bring forward to the community. We are at the point in the process where we have drafted a set of priorities and estimated expenses of the things we feel are in the best interest of the district to do, with an extreme focus on health and safety items. For those of you who follow me on Twitter, you saw the results of a rainstorm that took place last week. We cannot allow our facilities to continue to deteriorate in the manner in which they currently stand. I am certain that this community will be supportive of many of the initiatives we bring forward. I believe it's our responsibility to make certain that we have been very transparent, that we've given ample opportunity to the community input and ample discussion amongst the board. Tonight is part of that process. There'll be additional opportunities for the board in our next workshop meeting in early September, the 14th, and then there will be a community forum. Every resident of the district, whether they are parents or not, receive a postcard from me advertising that there will be a forum held on September 18th in the middle school auditorium, where we will go through the discussion phase that the board is currently engaging in, and it's a last opportunity for the community to give input before we ask the board to vote on a proposal on September 28th. Assuming the board sees fit to vote in favor of a proposal for a capital bond, we put up the community on the 28th. We will begin the legal process of legal notifications, and Mrs. Loughlin and I will begin the process of making sure we do our roadshow to keep the community fully informed. On the current timeline, we have a plan, the vote will take place the week after Thanksgiving, and we'll go from there. But tonight is an important part of that process, where Mrs. Loughlin and some representatives we have from BBS will help us to explain, as Mr. Donald as well, how we got to where we are, what some of the associated expenses are, some logistics of how the vote would work, and answer any questions or concerns the board has. It's important for the board to understand that we want to hear from you because you represent the community, your perspectives are likely in line with what the community may be thinking or feeling, so if something is a question for you, it's likely a question for a member of the community. If something is of concern to you, I would say the same. So tonight's a good night for discussion, so let's take advantage of that, and Mrs. Loughlin, if you could lead that discussion, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So as Dr. Basur mentioned, Carol Lisa Runder from BBS is here with us this evening, John McDonald, who is our facilities director, as well as two of our facilities committee members, Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Malalino, thank you very much for coming. You know, it is the summer, so it is tough to get the entire committee here, but we were successful in pulling together a meeting late July, and we had great attendance at that, and we had a great conversation to keep the momentum of this going forward. We don't want to lose our timeline. We were ahead of the game with where we were at before we ended the school year, so we need to stay on path with that. So we're going to kind of just give you an update as to what has occurred since we last met, which was in May. That was the last presentation that we gave. Like I said, facilities committee has met, we've been doing a lot of work in district on all of this at this time, so we now want to let the board know where we're at and how we intend to move forward. So since May, we've continued to refine the proposals for the capital bond, we continue working with BBS on the pricing structure based on feedback we received from the board in May, as well as facilities committee responses. The energy performance contract, RFP, which is Request for Proposal, did go out in, I believe it was late June. We received all the responses back for that. We've reviewed those responses, we have four vendors come back, and that is for the energy performance contract, which will do various work within the district at no cost to the district, while we will do a borrowing for it. The cost savings seen in our utilities will offset that, so there is no budget impact on that. So we're continuing to review those proposals, we've been going back and forth with the vendors that have supplied a response to us, and we are now in the process of scheduling a meeting to interview a few of those vendors so that we can come to a conclusion as a committee to make a recommendation to go forward with the board. So the committee administration, we've, at this point in time, have separated our potential bond proposal into three different categories. Each proposition would be contingent on the other, so Proposition 2 and 3 would not be able to pass without Proposition 1. So it's critical that everybody understands that that's our thinking on this, is that Proposition 1 is the list of items, the health and safety related items that we've been talking about for quite some time now, and Proposition 2 has some other items in there that we would like to see get done, but those items can't pass unless Proposition 1 goes through. So it's not cherry pick which one do you want and which do you not, as long as one goes through, the other two have the potential for passing. The total bond costs we've developed over the course of the past couple years at this point in time, and we work closely with the district architects, which is BBS, utilizing market rate that's out there currently, based on the bids that they're doing and on other projects, and it's also inclusive of their fees as it relates to those projects. So we make sure we are getting all costs related to the bond included in this pricing structure. It's important to understand as a school district, when you start seeing these numbers, some of them are high, and what a lot of people don't understand is we're not just in a regular competitive market. We have to do what's called a bid, it's a sealed bid on any large projects that we do, we have a policy in place. We can either go off on a state or Bosse's contract, however, a lot of these things, such as doing the roofs over, they're not necessarily on a state contract for such a large project. So we would do a sealed bid for that, and we are required to take the lowest bidder. Those bids are evaluated closely by legal counsel to make sure all bid requirements have been met, and there's a lot of specifications that are in there in order to make sure it is the right vendor that we're going with. So I know this is small and a little hard to read, this whole presentation will be up on the district website tomorrow. This is Proposition 1 that we have come together with at this point in time. It's just over $30 million, and it is including all health and safety related items. You'll see on there the renovation to the middle school and high school auditoriums, family consumer science room renovations, cafeteria renovations, in all but Boyd, they just did a nice facelift over at Boyd this summer, so they actually are very bright and cheerful cafeteria, and we want to kind of bring all of our buildings up to the same level that they brought theirs up to at this point. We have art room renovations, guided suite up at the high school renovation, music suites, robotics labs. While these may seem like educational enhancement items, to us, they're health and safety. They're not meeting the goals of which we need for our children and for the education. Our family consumer science rooms, if you've ever walked in them recently, is going through a time warp. It is all different colored cabinetry, very old, nineteen, I don't even know what, 30s type of furniture. So we are kind of looking to bring that up into today's world so that our children can learn how to use the most advanced equipment. The big thing on here is the roof replacement, just about $11 million, over $11 million. All four roofs in all four buildings need a complete replacement. We've been doing patchwork on them over the past couple of years. After Storm Sandy occurred, we did do some repairs on half of the roofs, not all of them have been fully replaced. We're starting to see them deteriorate, as you could have noticed on Dr. Basur's Twitter feed last week, with that heavy storm we received on Friday morning. It was quite an eye-opener for many of us, as there were many people, such as our maintenance and custodial crew, running through all the buildings, trying to find buckets and stopping the water that was just pouring into the building. American Disability Act renovations, they are required, we really don't have a choice. Sometimes SED, when you submit proposals, they are looking at what's called our building condition survey report that was submitted a year and a half ago to them, and they're looking at those items and saying, hey, you picked out that there are certain things you're not in code compliance with as of today. We were in code compliant when the items were built, however, things have changed and we're no longer. So when you do large projects, SED does require you to make those changes to your buildings. So some of these things are almost like non-emertables, and we've learned that going through this process with BBS, they have informed us of those items, because SED will kick it back to them and say, yeah, you got to tell your district they have to do this. So it's going to then take place of another project we maybe wanted to do. We have flooring replacement, exterior wall reconstruction in certain spots, ventilations and exhaust, the fire alarm system, again, an SED requirement that we're going to meet, pipe tunnel abatement, that's in all buildings, all of our crawl spaces, the insulation within the piping, or down on the ground, there may be some asbestos. Our guys can't go in there unless they suit up, or we have to pull an outside contractor, we want to get rid of all of that so that our guys can get in there and do the work that's needed. Sidewalks through all the buildings, you'll notice as you walk into any of them, we are starting to see a lot of uneven pavement, so we want to correct all of that. The pavement in the middle school, $280,000, that is actually not what the guys are doing right now, but on the side of our building by our maintenance garage, needs pavement, they are kind of working in dirt now at this point, and it also has some drainage issues over there. So we're looking to fix all of that, and I think pictures we showed back in May showed some of our guys that they're knee-deep in water because of the lack of drainage that we have going on there. We are looking to do drainage throughout the entire district, we're looking to get rid of Lake Elwood over at the high school parking lot, we're looking to fix the drainage over at the Harley Playground, and putting some new equipment over there. So this is taking on a large health and safety of the work that needs to be done that we've identified through the building condition survey report two years ago. Questions on this list before I move on?
Carol, can you just?
I'll elaborate. One of the questions that was raised at the time of the facilities committee was about the drainage and whether or not all drainage issues on a district-wide basis would be solved within the allocation within the bond. So we did some further investigation with the architects to make sure that when these proposals financially go forward, drainage will no longer be a concern anywhere on district property. Some longstanding issues like Elwood that the community is well aware of, as well as some other areas that may not be as well-known as problematic, like the Harley Playground, like we find the custodial entrance. We made sure that after this bond is successful and supported by the board and the community, we don't have to want to worry about drainage following that, so it's fully inclusive.
So Proposition 2, as I mentioned before, is some other items that the facilities committee had deemed important, but yet we wanted to stay within a certain price range of our original health and safety that we were going forward. So we created what we had called an A-list and a B-list, and throughout our conversations decided, okay, let's do a Proposition 1, Proposition 2. Proposition 2 has some more art room renovations, science room renovations, wall paneling and padding district-wide, removing paneling, replacing padding within some of our gym areas, air conditioning in all four buildings in the cafeteria areas. Our goal is to have a large instructional space or a large meeting space that has air conditioning. Right now, just the auditorium in this building, as well as Boyd, have air conditioning. With the auditorium renovation at the high school, however, we are looking to include air conditioning in that piece, but we also want to do it in the cafeterias now in all four buildings. And it would be essential for in case of an emergency, and we have to convene the children all into one location, and it is on a very hot day, we have that opportunity to do it in a nice, safe environment. A new generator, that would be here in the middle school, it's more for district office for our technology equipment that we have, it is to make sure that if we were to lose power, that all keeps running and we don't destroy our databases or anything that's out there technology-wise. Landscaping, a play area here in the middle school, a new parking lot in Boyd, which would be in the backside of Boyd off of the staff lot, a new scoreboard for the varsity baseball team, some football field renovations, we have it to be determined. Carol Lisa just informed me that they've worked that cost up and it's about $350,000. That is not for turf fields, that is to just level out our field, fix some of the areas maybe that we're having some troubles with here and there, so all in costs on that would be about $350,000. Locker room repairs and renovations here in the middle school, and the tennis court doing the additional three courts. If you noticed on the previous slide, we had four courts, this would do the additional three courts for that. So we're looking now adding in that $300,000, about $6.1 million on Proposition 2. Questions on that one? Proposition 3, or our C-list, we felt it important to keep this completely separate. This has to do with the football field, and it would be doing a concession stand, a turf field, synthetic field, and a new press box. The reason for the, you see such a high cost, is what's also included in this is under ADA requirements, if you're doing any changes such as a synthetic field and concession stand on your property, you're required to put sidewalks in. So that sidewalk area would have to be from the parking lot to the concession stands, and there's a lot of requirements within that concession stand area that we would have to do the ADA compliant. So this is just about $3.6 million. We feel it's important to keep this separate from all other items, as this is not a health and safety issue. It is just something that we all kind of looked at and said it would be nice, but we don't want to tie it in with any of the other proposals. Go ahead.
And I will add that, when we did review the results of the survey from respondents to the community, this was the issue that had the greatest divide amongst respondents who responded. If you recall, the format of the survey, it was somewhat support, strongly support, adamantly against. This one was split between half of the respondents strongly supporting it, half of the respondents were strongly opposed to it. All the others were, the variance wasn't quite as great. This one was a significant divide amongst the community and their perception. That, and having studied the bond issues that have been put up in other communities, we just know, unfortunately through the experience of others, that a synthetic field can be a divisive issue in the community. So the strategy that was discussed with the facilities committee for the board's consideration is to make it stand in line. That way, the rest of the bond proposal does not sink or swim based upon people's perception of whether or not they want a synthetic field to replace the turf in Elwood. If the community strongly supports it, that will be reflected in the vote. If the community is strongly opposed to it, that will be reflected in the vote. It doesn't place the board in the position of trying to decide for the community on what their desires are on this one particular item. There's lots of positive things that have been discussed about what it's been about, and there's been some negatives that have caused votes to fail in other places. And I know that our architects would be prepared to speak to some of those things, if you're unencouraged, but I think that was the rationale from the facilities committee, supported by the administration, to make the football field, or I should say, the athletic field and those renovations stand in line.
And to piggyback that, the $350,000 of the football field renovations in Proposition 2, should this be approved by the board and by the voters, that $350,000 would then get reallocated to another project. We decided that it would be prudent of the board to have the option to say, maybe we don't need a synthetic turf field, but we do need to do something to that field to try to level it out, based on the conversations we had in our committee. So that's kind of why we decided, let's make a compromise in Proposition 2, but still keep Proposition 3 as a standard line. Mr. Tamiya?
I just wanted to, besides that it states in prior in the presentation that a super majority of the community can't come out and support just a turf field and vote that through, if we're about Proposition 1 and 2, there's something to do with one another.
Correct. Proposition 3 cannot pass unless the other two prior want to pass.
That was my one question. Other question? The walking area up to the football field right now, to the side one, if you will, will, it does flood over there, so if Proposition 4 doesn't go through, will Proposition 2 reflect, is that something, we talked about sidewalks in Proposition 3, just a little clarity on the grounds over there?
And I think, I could actually maybe think, Mr. Pierce on that, that's a result of the street of Kenneth Avenue flooding into our property.
It goes down the dead end and comes into our walkway and floods into our property.
Correct, well, we're going to be looking into rectifying that situation.
Carol Lisa, we had no drainage in that spot, so we look at drainage at the, on the other side.
The close area to this parking lot, there was an issue, and there was an issue, I wasn't shocked. There, we didn't have it address.
So, well, we can take a look at that, if we can add that to it.
What kind of guarantee do we have, because I know these drainage issues have been tried, have been fixed for years and years and years, we've tried fixing and refixing, what kind of guarantee do we get with that, that this will be the final fix?
That's a hard question.
That's a good question.
Normally, how we would approach it, obviously, is that we would see, we would have to physically design anything, make soil warrants to see what's happening with the soil there, why it's not circulating properly, and we would design any drainage structure to go in there, and then we'd have to figure out how much drainage we really need to accommodate that, and there might be a lot of regrading. So we would hope that after we do our investigative work with the soil warrants, to figure out what's happening with the, with the area, and we get, obviously, surveys and totals and see where our grades are. We're pretty good at designing drainage, so we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to solve the issues for you.
Of course, so even with the rainstorm on this past Friday, even with the roof replacement, the issue we had in district office leaking, it literally leaked from the floor up, it was like a geyser, something none of us... It was like a geyser, something none of us have ever seen before, at least in district office. Maybe our guys have seen it, but we hadn't. The fixing the roofs would not fix that, because that was just so much water at such a rapid pace that forced through our drains, and that was tied into the drain system of the roof. So that will be prevented, however, all the leaks that took place up in this building, with it pouring through the ceiling, that will be gone. That same rainstorm, the outside D O parking lot was a lake. I, myself, in the four years here, have never seen that before. I know Mr. Pearson has in his tenure here, but a rain like that, that was so severe, so fast, I mean, I was shocked as even Dr. Bossard looked at it and said, oh my God, my car's almost underwater. Like, it was that bad. So I don't know if we'll ever have a true guarantee. Our goal is to attack all these problems that we're seeing and that we've heard from the board and the community and the committee of where all these key problems are. And we're working closely with the specialists in BBS that work on this type of stuff to attack it and get it, and make sure that we, you know, hit all of those areas that we're seeing these issues.
So then, I think it's important to charge Mr. McDonald and him to try to identify as best as possible the sources of what caused that brown swell that we experienced with those heavy rains, and to include action in drainage proposal that would prevent it. We would love new roofs that prevent the rain from coming in, but if we take those actions and we still suffer work swelling through the floor for a heavy rain, we really have to improve our position. So I would ask you to take a very careful look and make sure that the proposal we bring forward will, once and for all, address any drainage issue short of a hurricane landing directly in our parking lot.
I might want to add just one thing, because as Carrie had mentioned, obviously, the age of storm events, typically, we would design a three-inch rainfall over a 24-hour period, so if you get more than that, but we're designing the capacity of the drainage to be able to handle that, so if all of a sudden we get three inches in 10 minutes, it's gonna not yet dissipate as fast as you would expect, so.
Which, and to answer that, on that Friday morning, it was within an hour of the rain stopping, the sun coming out, that lake that we saw right out here was gone, however, Lake Elwood was still existing when we were pulling out.
And I think every entity can understand flooded pathways and drainage that takes a bit longer than we would like. I'm not going to accept flooded pathways, and that's what we were getting at.
Anybody else? Any other questions? So the total of all three, as you see here, is just under 40 million, add in that 350,000 for the football fields that was not added in as of yet, we're still looking just under 40,000, 39.8 at this point in time for all three of these projects.
Carrie, can I just interrupt for one second? And this kind of goes back to Mr. Malino's question. You know, the, the community has seen the roofs repaired many, many times, and we still have drainage. So when we talk about putting a new roof on, do you, can you, do you have any, I know we've done a lot of patching, when were the roofs last changed, you know, last replaced on the buildings?
Late 90s.
In the late 90s?
They were done from early to late 90s.
They're about 20 years old.
So about 20 years old. And what is the usual, how long does the roof usually last?
20 years.
About 20 years. Although, we've been patching this roof, these roofs for, since, at least 10 years. So our roof, our original replacement only really kept holding the water out for 10 years. How do we know that's, how, what kind of guarantee do we have, if we've spent 11 million dollars on roofs, that in 10 years, we're patching roofs again? Are there guarantees in this kind of thing?
Yeah, there are, and we can make sure we put the proper word in the contract, obviously, that will hold whoever puts a roof on our buildings to a 20-year contract, a 20-year guarantee.
And is that common?
It's usually the manufacturer has the 20-year warranty on them, and you would have a contractor warranty for two years or three years on that warranty. But if there's failure with the system, that the manufacturer, when the manufacturer warranties.
So do you get in a lot of situations where the manufacturers, like a Windows, it wasn't me, it was the installer, it was the, that's very frustrating to the community.
You could get that, but typically, we have built-in to our specs that the manufacturer is required to come in and do a final inspection and sign off that the roof was installed per their specifications, so that they will then issue a new warranty. So it's a major factor that we carry.
And that would all be in the bid specs when we start doing this project?
And we also, we know who the good roofing companies are that do public work, and obviously, we would be part of that process of when a bid comes in to determine if they're qualified there. You know, Carrie had mentioned earlier about the lowest bidder, but it's the lowest responsible bidder, and it's the lowest qualified there. So if the lowest bidder comes in and they're not qualified, we wouldn't award that to them. They have to make, you know, prove that they know how to do these jobs, they have the experience, we have built-in specs, certain number of similar projects that they're required to perform, show them to us, so that we can qualify for this too.
And I don't know if this is covered in your future slides, but that brings up my other question about how you get the pricing, and what are the laws regarding bidding of contracts and that kind of thing? Because I think some people in the community will look at the prices and say, why is it 500,000 or X, Y, or Z? So could you explain a little bit about how that works, or is that?
No, not, I didn't go too deep. A few before, I had, you know, a little bit, because we will continue as we continue these conversations, get more and more into that, and we've discussed it a little bit, conversations have come up saying 11 million dollars for four roofs, that's outrageous. But because the pricing structure is based on current fair market value, BBS prices these things out for us, their fees are included, we have to contract with them to do all this work, so that gets embedded in that cost as well. They're looking at it from a perspective, they know how many square feet our roofs are, they know what they're currently seeing bids come in at for the, per square foot, and then they do add a little bit more, because we're not going to be doing these right away. It's not today's cost of a roof. And there's a lot of factors that will come into play when we actually do the bid. So we can go out to bid, and this roofing could come in at maybe 10 million dollars, depending on the timing of which we put the bid out. If the contractors are very slow at that point in time that we're bidding, we could get a low bid, because they're desperate for work. If we're putting it out at a time where there's just so overloaded with work, and if they get your job, they get your job, so they're going to bid high. So all of our bids can come in high, and it could be a 12, 13 million dollar project. So it's critical that we work in a certain timeline, and that's where we'll utilize BBS's expertise of what they're seeing, the highs and the lows, based on their experience. They're working with numerous districts right now that are working on capital projects. They know what projects are coming down the line. They'll know when to put us in the queue for some of these bids in order to get it out to get us the best price. So there's a science to it. It's taking all of that information, and we're trying to make sure that we're covering, we're going, you know, on the higher end, but we need to make sure that we're covered in total, so that we don't come up short in these projects.
And then the ventilation and exhausts for the buildings, that has nothing to do, I know a lot of residents complain that their children are boiling hot in the winter.
That is.
That's the energy performance contract that is completely separate from.
Ventilation and exhaust is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in certain office areas where we don't have proper ventilation, maybe proper airflow, or there, it may be faulting on us a lot, and we're doing continuous repairs to it. So that's the ventilation that we're talking about. The other, that you're thinking of, the heat controls, really, is on the energy performance contract.
But we are addressing that problem, that seems to be a big problem for us.
It is a key that we're talking about.
I don't understand why it's hot and we're spending that kind of money.
And that's something that we're looking at within the energy performance contract. So before I get into that piece.
Yeah, I have one question about the roofs. While we're talking about looking forward to redoing our roofs, is there a possibility to change the roofs structurally within this allotment, to have them not be flat roofs that seem to always be problematic and end building with a flat roof?
Great question, which has been asked quite a few times, asked by us and asked by community members, and I will defer to Carrie Lisa and her expertise, but the simple answer is no. But I will let Carrie Lisa explain a little bit further as to why not.
Well, it would entail quite a lot, more money than what we allocated, so you're one of, I don't know how many schools and school districts on Long Island that decided to make flat roofs. So we'd literally have to rip the entire roof off and restructure your entire roof, put new framing in there, and I just think it would be very cost prohibitive to do that. You have a lot of capital equipment on roofs as well, so that would get impacted. We'd have to find new homes for all that equipment, where would it go? And, you know, it would be a highly new roof system. Typically, what we have, what we do now with the flat roofs, it's a tapered system, so they all, they do taper to drains, and the new work that we would do would obviously have, we would rip them right down to the deck, that's what we're doing. We're getting rid of everything, these numbers that look posing to you, and retapering everything so everything goes hitch properly to all the drains that are there. If we need to add a roof drain, we would do that, so that we can ensure that everything's drained properly. Obviously, the equipment will work around, but to specifically redo all the structure, I couldn't entirely.
We'd probably be looking at 30, 40 million just in the middle. But it's a question that has come up, because we even keep saying, why we have a flat roof? The board is obviously just puddling there and then coming through, but it's, it's just cost prohibitive at this time. Anything else on the bond before I move on to the energy performance contract?
No, it's not on the slides, but do you want to just touch upon, including the timeframe on when we go, our, when we go to bond, we vote, I don't know, do you have a thought?
Yep. So we're looking at, do you want to take that?
Go ahead.
What we're looking at is at the next work session, September 7, I believe it is, is to bring another update based on conversation tonight and feedback and some more research that we do. And also in that meantime, in those two weeks, we're going to be working on the energy performance contract, so we'll be able to bring an update in total on all projects on the September 7th work session. From that, September 18, Dr. Bossard is holding a superintendent bond forum here in the middle school, where we will go into much more depth now, as at that point, we hope to have a pretty much finalized list of what we're looking to do, as well as cost structure. So at that point, we're looking to do a little bit more in-depth presentation, some more photos of things that are going on, the videos and stuff that we've been putting together. We're working closely with Syntax, our PR firm, to put this stuff together for the community. September 28 is when we will bring forward to the board a proposal of propositions, which will take in count all of this work we've been doing, with the hopes that the board will then talk about that further, finalize that resolution, and set a date for a vote. As Dr. Bossard said earlier, we are looking at a late November, that is a timeline the facilities committee has been working under to get all this information out. So once the board sets that date and passes that resolution, we will then start all legal processes, and we'll start putting other presentations on the calendar, both within board meetings, as well as forums and community meetings outside with taxpayers and PTAs, civic associations, wherever we can go to get the information out. We will be sending out a budget newsletter, not a budget newsletter, sorry, bond newsletter specific just to this, so that everybody is informed and that will go to all forms. So that's kind of the timeline we're working under. Once and if this gets through, the board and then the voters, we are not looking to do the work right away, as, well, we are looking to do the work right away, we can't. We then start the process, the architects start putting the drawings together, we start submitting work to SED, State Education Department, facilities planning, and unfortunately, with them, it is quite a lengthy timeline to get work approved. At this point, the queue is about 18 months. They have hired outside VOCs to assist in that process, to help move some projects along. So our goal is to then take our projects and prioritize them a little bit further, and roofs being the number one priority, and kind of do one-for-ones. If you're doing a one-for-one project, no major reconstruction, you can potentially get that through SED a little bit quicker, with the hopes that maybe next summer, we're potentially, potentially doing new roofs. Long way down the road, though.
He's going to go to vote in November, and I think the question is, when is the work starting?
We're not going to see work right away. It's going to take a.
I think, because I think they're thinking, are we voting and we're getting?
And I think once we get a vote date set, once the board approves and moves forward and is confident to go forward with a bond vote, at that point, all presentations forward, we'll start to put a more definitive timeline together for as to when work could potentially start.
Okay, before you move on, I'm sorry, before we began this presentation, I gave a precursor, that this is the current status of where we are in the conversation, but I encourage the board to give us some feedback. And based upon the presentation being sent home prior to tonight's presentation, I received two questions from some board members that I would like to respond to for both the board and the community. One is about cost, and I asked Mrs. Auckland to put together a basic estimate that should not be considered exact or gospel at this point, trying to estimate the cost for the average homeowner, which is very difficult to do in a very diverse community and has a wide range of property taxes that are paid. But we tried to look at the propositions labeled one, two, and three currently, and the financial impact they would have on the district, or the taxpayers. So because of the expiring debt that Mrs. Auckland tends to refer to throughout this process, and incurring new debt, the average estimated impact on a homeowner for that first Proposition One, 30 million dollar bond, would be about 135 dollars per year per household. Then when we look at adding Proposition Two to that, bringing Proposition One and Two together, which is about a 36 million dollar proposal, we approach 250 dollars per year per household. Now, for those that are wise and raising that max, you may question, why 30 million dollars costs 135, but 36 million dollars costs 250? That seems disproportionate, and you would be right. The reason for that is that a large portion of Proposition One is replacing expiring debt, whereas if we go to that 36 million dollar total, we are in fact incurring some new debt that raises the average cost to a homeowner. Do we think it's an insurmountable cost? I don't know. 12 dollars a month? I'm not sure on how the community will perceive that. Then when we look at Proposition Three, which as you know is the modifications to athletic fields, that brings the average cost to a homeowner to approximately 120 dollars, so adding 70 dollars a year in isolation for the modifications to the athletic fields. So that was, that was the first question that was submitted by a board member. The other was something we had to look more deeply into, and we had to discuss with Bond Council and our architects. Is it typical for a district to go forward with a three-tier proposal? The answer to that question is no. It is more common to have a one-tier proposal where everything is all conclusive, or a two-tier proposal, which has the large majority of the items listed, and then something in isolation. So if we were to make modifications to our proposal to be more in line with what is norm for both our bond council and PR firm, who is charged with helping us to prepare the presentation for the community, it would be a combination of Proposition One and Two becoming Prop A, and the athletic fields becoming Prop B. And I know that question was raised by a board member, and I want the board to be able to have, to have an open dialogue about that, because as discussed, this is a proposal that was discussed through the facilities committee as a potential form to bring in the community. But it's the board that has the final decision on what the community will be going on. So I am curious to hear where you are. I will tell you where I am, if you're interested, and we can go from there.
Dr. Bossard, these figures that you just gave us, I know we had some dialogue back in May about us being charged either 3% or 4% interest based on our financial status designation. So where are we at with that, being we had some state aid come in? Have we increased our status? And is this based on a 4% number or a 3% interest?
As you see the big grin on my face, I am very happy to report, we just finished our audit, the auditors left yesterday with very positive news, which excites. The auditors left yesterday with very positive news, which excites me. I know I'm a nerd, but it excites me really because my team has worked so hard the past few years to get to where we are right now. And I thank the board for the support that you've given, me and my office, to get us to where we are, and for your visions that you have on a financial side. And it's not just, we're working on all this for the education of our children, but you're very mindful of the fiscal status of the district. And happy to report that preliminary numbers, we're not finalized yet. We have hit the button to finally close the books. We are fully funded at four percent. We are funding our reserves. We are funding, we don't have the final number that we are putting towards those at this point in time. The money that we're due from the state aid, the million dollars in back aid that we're due, we are awaiting further information from the state. As from my correspondence yesterday with them, they cannot give me a definitive date when they will pay it, just sometime in September. So we actually might not record that money for the year end 2017. We may report it year end 2018, which I am not hesitant to do. I'd rather do that from a financial perspective, because it keeps us on that positive trajectory going forward. And we're in a good position to not have to report it. So in conversations with the auditors, if we don't get that money prior to September 15th, which is when we're officially closing the books, to get the audit out to the board and audit committee and approved it up to the state on time, we will report that money in the current school year, not last year. However, given that, I also ran a fiscal designation today based on the information when we closed yesterday with the auditors. And according to our numbers and according to this comptroller's worksheet, we will have no fiscal designation. We will be off of the list completely, which is what our goal has been. So we're doing very well. And again, I thank you for your support, my office, and the work we've been doing. Our goal is to maintain that, though. We can't have these fluctuations of up and down. We're back pretty much to where we were in 2013. The numbers are very similar in 2013, which is when we had no designation. Our score actually is exactly the same. So I'm just hopeful that, you know, with your support and with the administration team we have in place, we continue on this path and keep our financial health. Given that, I did tell that I had a conversation with bond council today. Just received updated numbers from them today, because I did have this information. We have a little bit more definitive on what bond numbers we're looking at. They're using three percent, which is current market rate at this point in time. Those are the numbers that they're giving to me for their projections. We're also using a fifteen-year payback. We had also discussed back in May, either fifteen or twenty year. The recommendation from them is to do a fifteen-year, because these are all repairs. They're all health and safety. They're not new construction. So the building aid will only flow for fifteen years. If you do reconstruction, it flows for twenty. So we're trying to match them up, one for one. So we've decided to do a fifteen-year payback borrowing, and they're giving us projections on a three percent rate at this time. So it's good news. If we continue on that, we will get reevaluated from Moody's when we do go out to the borrowing, which if we continue this path of fiscal health, our Moody's rating should go up, which we could potentially see maybe a lower interest rate being offered to us.
So this is based on the lower interest rate?
This is on three percent current market on our rating.
If I can, I'd like to weigh in on the propositions 1, 2, and 3, and possibly combining 1 and 2. I would be in favor of that as a board member and as a resident. When I look through what is listed in Proposition 1 and 2, they seem very similar in priorities. And I think that if we separate it into 1, and then 2, and then 3, it clutters what the voter is looking at and understanding. And I look at some things on Proposition 2. Science room renovations stands out to me. It's 2017. I don't necessarily love that being in a second priority list, and I'm not sure that it is truly a separation of priority lists. And then when I do the math on it, in addition to just thinking it's better organized to have a Prop A, Prop 2, I mean, A and B or 1 and 2, doing the math on it, the difference, which Dr. Bossard explained, between one thirty-five a year and two fifty a year for the average homeowner, between separating them and combining them, that's less than ten dollars difference a month. And I would hate for a clutter on a voting ballot to rob us of the things of Proposition 2 just for ten dollars less, actually, a month. So I would be all in favor of combining 1 and 2 to just be Proposition 1. And then I do completely agree and appreciate having the turf field and all of that stuff, which is clearly separate and an outlier as a separate option.
I think it's important to reiterate that this meeting was for a discussion and that we're not voting on anything tonight. The difference between Proposition 1 and 2, and if we combine them, is about a hundred and fifteen dollars a year for the average household, if that's what you're saying. I think that there probably are things on both of these lists, not so much Proposition 1, but on Proposition 2, that we could get that number in keeping with our priorities, a little bit lower than that, looking at items. So when you look at air conditioning in all the office areas on Proposition 1, but air conditioning in the cafeteria on Proposition 2, you know, I think that for seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure if more people are going to be using another area where, you know, if there's places on these propositions that we could combine or look at more closely so that we get that number down a little bit, I would certainly, I think it might be confusing to the public to have 1, 2, and 3, and understand that they have to choose 1 in order to get 2, and they have to choose 1 and 2 in order to get 3. I think that no matter how much communication we give to the public, that that is going to be difficult to explain. I mean, it was even difficult to explain how to fill out, you know, how to vote for board trustees at some point. So I think it's important that the simpler, the better, and that we probably can look at these lists and decide, you know, individually, going back a little bit to the science teachers, to these areas, you know, exactly what they need and want from us, and is that a finite number in cost? And that's sort of my question to you.
We can certainly do that. And that's kind of why we put some of these things here. So the science rooms, let's take that, for example, one point seven million.
Right.
Yes, we all agree, science rooms need to be done. And we do have, you know, some different renovations going on in the other one. But the science rooms, and in conversation with the building administration up at the high school, as well as our directors, is there is a concern if we pour one point seven million dollars into science room renovations, our enrollment is declining. And by the time we get to do that work, maybe two years from now, the amount of children up at the high school requiring the use of the science labs will go down. So maybe we don't need to renovate all of the science labs, because we're not going to be confusing them all at some time in the near future. So that's a conversation we've been having of trying to prioritize, which is why we dropped that down to the second list. But we can certainly revisit it again.
But maybe the press can go back.
Right.
And just the chemistry lab, or just, you know, are there areas such as those that we can say, well, actually, this is what the teaching staff is really wanting, and maybe that number isn't quite as high as this?
Correct. And that's something that we can go back to now and look at and say, you know, okay, we're looking at one point seven. Maybe we don't need to do all of them. We need to do one or two, or do we need to do, you know, do we need the hoods? Do we need certain things that are in there that we could maybe rework? So we can certainly have those conversations, you know, especially now the teachers are coming back and continue the conversation with the directors and principals.
Okay. And what office areas are you talking about? Is the main office?
It's the main office in each building. As maybe everyone doesn't know, but district office as well as the building offices, we're all twelve-month employees. We do work over the summer months, the hottest months of the year. So to have functioning air conditioning is ideal, not just for the individuals, but for our computer equipment that's in there, our copy machines. Without that, the humidity in the offices, the paper jam, we start causing further problems. The largest cost we're seeing is in the middle school, and that is for the front office in the middle school to correct their lack of air conditioning they've got going on over there, as well as fix an issue we have going on in district office. We have a set of offices, I think it's maybe three or four, that are connected to one control. And that one person that can control that sometimes is cold and sometimes is hot, as he's controlling that camera. So on days he's feeling cold, it's turned off. But the person three offices down may be sweating, because it's blowing too hard in his office.
So there is air conditioning, it's just not...
It's not controlled properly. We also have the conference room and the break room are controlled under one. Where it's hot in the conference room, it may be cold in the other. So what we're looking to do is put them on separate units so that the control system would be a little bit more even within the district office, where we have twelve-month staff working to make sure they all have proper ventilation and everything working.
So you do think that if we combine these propositions to make it easy for everyone to understand and to get some of these things that we really believe are important on Proposition 2, that we could individualize that and take a look at some of those numbers to do that, or?
Air conditioning was a really interesting result on the survey that we sent out. In that D community, we was heavily in favor of investing finances into air conditioning. So the other goal that we're attempting to accomplish here is to make all of the large group areas in each of the buildings air conditioned, which will include all the cafeterias and the auditoriums that we have across the district. So you'll see some of those numbers are fairly substantial. But what that gives us the ability to do is to know that on some of those oppressive hot days in September and June that we do experience, that there are large group areas where we can comfort all students on days that could be oppressive. I witnessed myself the principals guiding teachers to bring children to air-conditioned areas within the building on days that are just oppressively hot. The cost to air-condition all of our classrooms is cost prohibitive. We can't do that. So the alternative is to create areas sufficient enough to bring all the students on days that it is too hot to be in classroom. So that's why some of those numbers for both auditorium renovations and air conditioning look like very large numbers. It's substantial work that would be there.
With your request, what we could do is go back at Proposition 2, take a look at the numbers, the work that's included in each of those. In the next week, BBS, John McDonald, and myself can kind of rework some of that information. Facilities Committee will be meeting the first week of school, doing some interviews. So if I could, I could potentially grab a few minutes of their time to take a look at the rework that we've done. Because then that following Thursday, that same week, we are hoping to present this to the board, and we can bring feedback to what maybe we've been able to revise and make Proposition 1 and Proposition 2.
Now, those are what I would consider minor changes, making adjustments to some of the line items included within the propositions. I would consider moving to a Prop A and a Prop B a much more substantial change, because it's a different conversation than we've been having with Facilities Committee and community to this point. So I've heard from Mrs. Marcus, we're not voting for him, but I would like to hear the input from other members of the board, whether or not that's something they would like us to further investigate and prepare for our next conversation.
I fully support that. I look forward to hearing more about it, but especially hearing from you that other districts kind of do the same kind of thing. It's one and then, or the, and the other. So I would support looking into that further, Mrs. Van Leeuwen.
I support that as well. I think the three propositions might get us in. I don't want to sit here and cherry pick things off the list, but I do, I would like to see some tightening of the belt and maybe reevaluate some of this stuff as an absolute necessity, and to what extent. So I do support an A, B, and 1, 2. Mr. Toney?
I support the combining of some of, some of Proposition 2 and 1, having 1 and 2. Getting here, so I was curious, are we looking at taking anything from Proposition 2 currently to the standalone Proposition 3 to segregate them out a little bit? Are we going to take maybe, just pulling an item, not pulling any out there, but the, I'm afraid to pick anything.
The new generator.
The new generator, right. No one cares about that. Are we looking to take the new generator and put that on what's going to be Proposition 2? Are we looking at just taking it and laterally looking at the 1 and keeping the synthetic field, the press box, the contention stand as the standalone? Or are we looking to maybe massage it a little bit differently? Or we could take some of these not-so glamorous items and move them forward? I'm just asking, because the community will ask.
That's what we're asking you. We would like you to give careful thought and consideration for the different items that are included in each of the proposals and see what you feel you support as a board, and what items you would like the administration to further evaluate in concert with what you believe the perception of the community would be. We will have the conversations internally. We would like you to do the same prior to our next meeting. Really give it some thought, careful consideration, now that we've had this portion of the conversation, so that when we come back to the table for the next board workshop, which is also focused on this proposal, we can make some of those intelligent changes rather than just, you know, deciding off the top tonight.
Can I also ask the board some guidance? Is there a dollar threshold that you want to stay under? Total bond, not maybe, or total cost impact to the taxpayer? You know, you had said if we can try to maybe lower that hundred and twelve dollar differential between the two, at what point is palatable to you as a taxpayer and a board member? Or are you looking total bond, a thirty-seven million dollar bond versus a thirty-five million dollar bond?
I don't think that the total bond is meaningful to people, because they don't understand what that means to their pocketbook. So to me, the total bond is not so much the question. It's the impact on people's pocketbooks at the end of the day. So I would like to, I mean, I don't, I hate to give you a number, because we're looking at important things and deciding what's important. If it was less than two hundred dollars a year, it would be great. But I hate to say a number for myself, because we're looking at important things for the students. So if we can tweak that first and come up with a number that we all feel comfortable with, I prefer that personally to giving you a number and you working to meet that number. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but can I have some input on that?
I'm just wondering if some of these items on here, can, if we can find a way to budget them in the upcoming years so we're not paying interest on things maybe like wall padding, for instance?
There was also, I mean, this is a short list. The whole total building condition survey report was over forty million dollars. And some of those items, the energy performance contract is picking up. Some of them, the smart bond projects are picking up. But some of them are picking up already within the general fund budget. And we're also, what we'll do is continue to look at these items and say, what else in here can we pick up? In addition, which I believe I've mentioned prior presentations, is there's what's called hundred thousand dollar projects that you can build into your general fund budget and do on an annual basis. So that is something we're also looking to start taking on in order to start tackling some of these larger things that we're starting to see occur. And what we can do is look at this list and say, okay, maybe we can put this into that prioritization of adding in those hundred thousand dollar projects.
And not only that, but with the positive reports from the auditors and the stronger financial position that the district finds ourselves in, one of the things that I will ask the board to consider and discuss during budget time, and I don't want to fill your heads with too much tonight, but what we have the capability of doing is asking the board to approve a capital reserve fund. Right now, we have reserve funds for employee retirements, for teacher resignances, for bookings comp, what the law allows. We can ask the community to allow the district to establish a capital reserve fund. And that would give us the flexibility that when you do have fund balance at the end of the year, depositing money for a specific purpose into a capital reserve fund for later use, which the board would have to again approve of a capital project. What that would enable us to do is move away from having to have a capital bond proposal each time a major repair is necessary. And it would get us into a better habit of cyclically replacing and repairing big-ticket items using money that was already allocated in the district budget when we do find ourselves with fund balance. You can't do that prior to getting to the four percent. You can't do that until your other reserves are at a healthy level that the auditors feel is fiscal responsible and the control designates as such. We are in a position or close to the position where it is an intelligent conversation to have about asking the community to support the creation of a capital reserve fund, where Mrs. Van Leeuwen can respond to your questions, some of these items will come off the list or future list and be financed through that, through that line.
I just want my last question. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollar football renovation, was that calculated into the numbers that you gave us?
It was not, no. Yeah, Carol Lisa was just able to survive it with that updated information that we wanted. with that updated information that we wanted.
Right, I see.
So we'll have update, we'll work through this. Like Dr. Kausert said, please, as a board, continue to take a look at it and take your notes down. Come back to us with feedback. On September 7th, we'll do the same type of conversation to try to finalize this as best as we can. At the September 28th meeting, Bond Counsel will be present at that meeting. He will be present also at the forum, as well as BBS, to answer any further questions that we may have. But Bond Counsel will be present at that meeting that we would hope that the board would pass a resolution to set the vote in case that there is still some tweaking to be done at that last minute, and he'll be able to help and guide us through that process.
But to be absolutely clear with board and community, what I'm hearing is that the board would like us to restructure the proposal for a conversation on September 7th to approve Proposition A, Proposition B.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
So let it be.
So we will move on. The Energy Performance Contract is another major project we're working on. And this, we're trying to tie this into the capital bond work that we're doing. So they do go hand in hand. We've been working on this for some time. Board authorized the district to go forward about a year and a half, two years ago maybe. But we wanted to make sure this ties in with the bond off the Building Condition Survey report. So it's kind of been on hold. We received four responses to the request for proposal. Those responses, because it's what's called a request for proposal, it's not a sealed bid, we have the opportunity to negotiate what's in there. And they're four different proposals. So BBS took the time to take all four proposals, kind of chart it all out for the committee, take a look at it and say, what are the similarities? What are the differences? What do we want everyone to include? And kind of cherry pick one. We went back to the vendors and said, okay, we like your proposal. However, can you maybe take this out and put this in? So we're in the process of doing that right now with the vendors. And in addition, we're looking now to bring a couple of the vendors forward for interviews with the Facilities Committee so that we can keep moving forward in that process. The contract plan, it's, like I said, is working together with the bond proposal. We're working with things that we identified as improvement through the EPC instead of varying across through the bond. Items such as the heating controls, maybe lighting fixture replacement, ceiling tiles replaced. Some simple things, but yet they have a large cost to them that what you have to do when you do an Energy Performance Contract, the overall payback has to be within 18 years. So while you can do something significant that will have maybe a 30-year payback, you're doing maybe lighting controls that's having an immediate payback so that it's the average payback of the entire project over 18 years. So the committee had way back when, took the Building Condition Survey report and prioritized from there, what are we looking at in a bond? What do we want to maybe see in an Energy Performance Contract? And that's kind of where we're working off of with the vendors at this point in time. Being that we've already, we've been working through the bond list and have almost solidified that particular list, we now have the proposals from the Energy Performance Contract crew, we can kind of say, what are we not able to definitely pick up in there that maybe we needed to pick up in the bond? So we were able to kind of work now in coordination for these two projects to make sure we're getting at the most important items that we need to see done. So we do still have some questions out there. And these are things that the committee has been going back and forth on. And I asked the board to consider these items as well. Solar panel installation. It has been a topic of conversation at the committee level for the past couple of years. It has been conversations with Energy Performance Contracts. Do we want to do solar panels on all four buildings? Do we want to do it on just one building? And see what it is, see what the reaction is? It's kind of up in the air, and the committee was kind of back and forth. I think consensus of committee was, let's try it on maybe one building and see how it goes. Energy Performance Contracts are not a one-time deal. You can do multiple phases of those projects. So we could choose to do one building at this time and maybe two, three years from now realize, hey, you know what? We're really seeing the benefit from it. We're able to utilize it in other resources, so we want to see more of it. So we could do an Energy Performance Contract just for solar paneling. So there's other options out there when you have these Energy Performance Contracts because it is not voter-proof, the board passes a resolution, and it's a budgetary savings. The other is conversion of three boiler systems from steam to hot water. Currently, Boyd has hot water, so that's why it's only the three buildings. And what that is doing is taking the entire burner system out of every building, taking all the univentilators out and getting rid of the steam and putting in hot water heating. All proposals include controls. So what we were saying before with the inability to control the heat, all Energy Performance Contract vendors have included the control system in their proposal. Replacing steam to hot water is a completely separate piece of it, but it does tie into that. And then the other that we're looking at is can more of the Building Condition Survey report be picked up in the proposals based on these two changes? So we had four proposals, three somewhat similar and one completely different, which kind of gave us in Facilities Committee pause and kind of made us think differently. It wasn't a typical Energy Performance Proposal. So that's what we're looking at now, and that's where these items are coming into play as to what is important. However, if we reduce some of the solar panel proposal on some of the vendors, they can then pick up maybe some of the other items in the Building Condition Survey report or what other vendors have proposed. So this is what we're looking at as a committee. These are questions that we've gone back to the vendors and asked them to take a look at. And these are questions the committee will ask the vendors when we meet with them. So again, I asked the board to consider these options, consider these things, come back to us with some feedback as to, you know, what are you thinking? If you have any type of thought process on any of these items. I can't get into the technical of it, not my area of expertise, but we do have some experts in the room that could maybe answer some questions that you have.
So I do have a question about the solar panel installation. So in my mind, if we're getting four new roofs, we should be doing four new sets of solar panels. From what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, it actually offers a little bit of protection to the roofing?
Protection, yes.
My concern is if we start adding solar panel installation as roofs age, there could be, you know, potential issues down the road with that. So that's just where I'm coming from. I mean, does anybody have?
Perhaps we should get a point of clarification and carry for the evening. The solar panel installation would be contingent upon bond passing and roofs to be installed. I don't imagine that would...
We would not put solar panels on the current roof.
Carol Lisa, if you could add some...
Typically, I'm sure you've all seen how the solar panels are installed, but they typically, there's really no penetration through your roof surface. What they do is they put, it's down like an pallet. So the visit shouldn't just sit on the roof. We've had districts that have solar panels on their roofs, all the roofs that we have to now replace. And they, they literally have to lift them off, but it's not as if we're making any penetration through the roof. So yes, it's probably a better idea to do them certainly on a new roof. You don't want to put them on and have to take them off. So, but in terms of any other longevity issues, I, there's really not been any issues with that in terms of putting the panels on. And like I said, they don't, they don't penetrate. It's not like your home where they have to actually secure it through your roof to keep it on there. They're actually setting trays. And so there's limited issues with any kind of penetration going through the roof.
And if there needs to be a roof repair and the solar panels have to come off, the cost of them?
It would cost you a little bit more, obviously, if there's an issue underneath. The panel would have to be taken out. Typically, they can work around the tray. If they can't work around the tray, they'll have to move a section of the tray. So there are issues with, if you do have a problem with a roof that has to be repaired, but it's not, it's not causing penetration for in terms of creating a hole or creating a penetration.
Is it so much residential where if there is a problem with the panel or they have to be repaired, that it causes to the manufacturer to the company and not to the homeowner? In this case, the district?
If there's a, if there's a repair to the panel, the panels have to be removed. A lot of times, you might be able to perfect the panels. Some of the panel manufacturers, we'll be, the CDSCOs and Solwees, and they will, they'll warranty their install on your roof so that if a repair is necessary, that it will cause by them or in proper installation, they will come back and do it.
Just some other questions that pop into my head. Since building the roofs to a pitch would be a substantial cost, is there any way to put the solar panels on a pitch that would bring them to a direction that would sort of leads to the gutters and out the building so we don't have to... Just in curiosity, can you analyze what we're getting?
The panels come on a pitched tray system. So they're independent of whatever the roof is doing. So the tray is on a slope, basically. And it creates its own pitch. And we orientate it to, that's still a point for us, but we would orientate to maximize the solar impact to that panel. So it might be skewed on the roof because the way the sun comes across might not be exactly oriented south, north, east, west. But the tray itself provides for the pitch that the panel actually sits on. So really no need to, again, pitch the roof.
So let me just summarize what I think you're saying is that the solar panels neither help drainage off the roof, nor do they hinder. It doesn't really affect the roof, except I imagine it adds a lot of weight.
Well, we would absolutely engineer that in terms of the weight of the panels and whether it would be placed on your existing structure.
Okay, and if we did start with one building of a solar panel and you said that the Building Condition Survey has other items on there that are now on the bond, we could, are there things on the bond that could be taken off the bond and put in this energy?
No.
There's nothing really on there?
No, that's why we were working together with both of these because we needed to make sure anything that could be picked up, we pulled out of the bond.
Okay.
So, and that was our, once we got the proposals in, we went through it all. We said, okay, are we missing anything? Is there anything that not being picked up that we can see that we have to pick up or vice versa? And we're, we're pretty comfortable that we think we've gotten it covered as to what has to be done between the two proposals.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any data of actual savings from solar panels in other school districts?
More and more school districts are starting to use them, and we can certainly try to obtain that information. But what, with an Energy Performance Contract, you're guaranteed savings. And if you don't, and how it gets written into the contract with the energy savings company is that if you don't see those savings in year one, year two, however long we determine that contract to be, they have to pay us the savings. So if we don't see it in our utility bills by, through a measurement and verification process that they have to go through, they then have to write a check to the district to make up for the lost savings. So essentially, by putting solar panels in your Energy Performance Contract, you're guaranteeing yourself some savings. But again, it's the savings over the course of 18 years aggregate of all work that's getting done in that project as a total. That's the end. Any other questions?
Carrie, I just want to thank you and the Facilities Committee and everyone involved on the Facilities, Mr. Tamiya and Mrs. Wise, the community members present and folks that weren't able to come on all the work that they did on this bond proposal and the presentation. It really looks like a lot of work and a lot of time. And as a board, we really appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
So the next discussion is regarding board goals. And I'll try to keep it a bit more brief than perhaps initially planned. For the purposes of the community, the board held a very productive retreat day in July where amongst other things discussed, we spent a good deal of time focusing on goals that would be adopted and established for the coming school year. Tonight is not the night where I'm asking the board to adopt these goals, but I felt that since it had been a good few weeks since we had drafted them, the board had the opportunity to review them, tonight would be for discussion. So rather than really spending a lot of time dissecting, I will simply ask the board through each of the goals. Who's got the mouse?
The clicker, anything. Clicker. I'm over here.
Thank you.
You can go.
When we're reviewing the goals, after we've had some time to digest and dissect, does the board have any recommendations regarding the language that we drafted for Goal Number One, Extraordinary Student Focus for the community present? There are copies of the goal that is drafted in the back of the room. And for those hearing from home, Mr. Tranquino has the screen focused on Goal Number One, Extraordinary Student Focus.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments on that? I think that the last sentence is a bit run on. So this includes a commitment to the depth and breadth of instructional and co-curricular programming focusing on the whole child. I think that should be theory in. This will result in a shared demonstrable belief that's the finest school district in the state and nation. One thing we really need that the entire community can take pride in. But I don't know how everyone else feels about that. My, my, this is home. When we talk about holistic instruction and we talk about what we're, what we started speaking of in the beginning of the meeting, about holistic instruction mindfulness, really taking into consideration where each child is coming from. When we look at multifaceted data-informed instruction, to me, we're not getting at, we're getting at testing and evaluations there, but we're not getting at other things that we use to individualize our instruction for children that we know, for example, are having difficulties at home or really looking at that whole picture. Is there any way that we can put language in that speaks to that? Whether it be anecdotal records or something that would speak more to a holistic approach and not just data?
I'm wondering, some of the work, some of the work we've been doing in preparation for Superintellers Conference Day looks at the aspects of what does it mean when we say teaching the whole child? And some of the terms that we will utilize deal with social, emotional learning and with cultural proficiency so that we see all aspects of the student at one piece. And the other would be, I guess, what we often refer to as informal or...
Anecdotal.
Yeah. So we could perhaps crack some language during some of those pieces.
Because I really, really like the feeling behind the goal. But saying that, and I like the fact that we say it's multifaceted, but data-informed instruction, multiple measures, yeah. But it all seems like measures, and we're not really including that holistic piece of every child is, you know, comes to the table.
I just wanted to really add though that the data, even if it's social, emotional data...
Right, is data.
No, yeah, it is. So when, so when you look at the sentence and you see multiple measures, that is anecdotal information, feedback from students. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
But I...
Yeah, I'm kind of going to echo Diane's sentiment and wonder if the second portion of the goal speaks to your concern. That said, this concludes a commitment to the depth and breadth of instructional and co-curricular focusing on the whole child. And we're not defining exactly what that means, but as practitioners, we understand what that means.
Right.
So perhaps it's there through the language, focusing on the whole child, inclusive of social, emotional learning, and you do a measure of, and cultural proficiency? How's the board feel about that?
Maybe the data is derived through multiple measures. Would you want to clarify? Maybe not. But, you know, that we're getting the data from... But you know that we're getting the data from multiple measures. That leads to instruction designed to meet the very needs of individual learners.
Well, it says that. Data in instruction derived through multiple measures.
So just reversing that.
Well, this is why I handed my hard copy to Mary Lou. So she's getting help. Correct. Okay. Do we have an understanding of what the board is looking for? Okay. Any other commentary about goal number one? Thank God. Goal number two is expansion of success programs. This was revised following the workshop based upon some of the feedback that we received post. So you've had this for some time. Are there any recommendations involving goal number two? Seeing none? Just kidding. Did any questions about number two? Okay, I do really well. Goal number three speaks a bit more specifically than the first two philosophical goals. This one is the implementation of the AP CAPTAIN program. This is a program that was presented by Mrs. Hall and her team earlier, I'm sorry, last school year. And really captures what we'll be implementing at the time when that school comes. Any recommendations regarding goal number three? Okay. Goal number four, we spent ample time talking about capital bond proposal. This will be a very easy goal to measure success or failure. And we'll level right around to center verse. Any concerns or questions about the way the goal was ordered? Okay. And the last was policy review. This is something that I think the board very fairly put a finger on trying to improve about the governance of our organization. We have had a practice of bringing new policies forward almost on an ad hoc basis as they're either recommended by NISBA or something comes up in the building, inclusive of tonight where there are some policies brought forward because it was either directed by NYSEDA that we needed to review it or just upon happenstance that we stumbled upon a policy that just doesn't reflect our current practices. I think the board very correctly charged the administration with putting in a systematic review that will start us at the beginning of the policy and then we'll take us straight through the completion to make sure that not only do our policies find themselves in accordance with regulation and law, but also reflect the policy practices currently taking place in the district. And this generally, our newly appointed district clerk has already begun to communicate with NISBA on the best practice in order to make sure that the process is completed effectively and over, you know, efficient period of time. Believe it or not, we've already started. But is there any wording that needs to be changed regarding goal number five?
I have a problem with the last sentence. Make sure every policy is relevant, pertinent and in compliance with current law. Yes, regulation, yes. But I do not believe that we have to be in compliance with NISBA recommendations. So you don't want to hold us to that with the word compliance, but maybe being mindful of or informed by not compliance?
Splitting hairs a little bit because the recommendations of NISBA are typically to be in compliance with law. Rarely do they say this is what you should do. Most NISBA recommendations are to help me be in compliance with law and regulation. But if you're not comfortable with that wording, let's think about a better way to assign it. Pertain in compliance with current law regulation and mindful of New York State school regulations?
Perfect.
Is that good for the board? Okay, okay. Any questions concerning?
No, I just wanted to mention that our goals from last year had some physical planning and responsibility sections. They had community engagement section. So I just want folks at home and here to realize that those things, of course, are ongoing and it's part of our self-evaluation, those items, and it's part of Dr. Bossert's evaluation. So it's not like, oh, those are on the back burner and we're not concerned about that anymore. We're a little bit more specific this year. But we, you know, we're always working to be physically responsible and to engage the community. That goes without saying. And it's part of our evaluation system as a board and a superintendent.
If it pleases the board, I'm sure you noted, as has the community, that we took our goals, made them graphically pleasing and drew them up poster size and placed them throughout the district. If it pleases the board, I will not remove the goals that were established last year. As I believe there are unrelated goals that continue to matter. I will simply add the newly adopted goals after the board ceased to do so at the September 28 meeting to the existing displays. Is that good? And that's what we shall do. Anything else regarding goals? Then the last item that I listed as a discussion item or presentation, I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilkinson to take us through. But obviously, the board and community is aware of the tragic events that took place within our district last week. And there are several things that the district will be doing to respond to try to prevent future tragedies. One of the things that we felt relevant to do was to become a participating member in a Long Island Coalition referred to as lifespan. So I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilkinson to advise the board a little bit about that organization and the benefit it will bring to the Elwood School District and the benefit the Elwood School District will bring to the Coalition.
Thank you. I actually put together a little handout. So if you wanted to take a look at it as I'm telling you about lifespan. It stands for Long Island, I just took a look at this, Long Island School Practitioner Action Network. And it's actually a network that was created to provide mental health services to districts that are experiencing a crisis. Who are the members that make up the network? Our school districts, employees who have a specialty in crisis prevention and intervention, who have gone through a training program under lifespan. They are the people who are charged with coming into a school district when there is a crisis. I don't know if the board knows this or even the community, but Elwood has a crisis team in place. And when Dr. Bossert received the bad news about the tragic passing of one of our students, he contacted several members of the administrative team. It was a meeting. And by 10:00 AM the following morning, he was leading a meeting in his office of not only building-based crisis team members, but members of the central office. We were very fortunate that Dr. Bossert had been through a very similar tragedy in his former district. Not fortunate for him. But it allowed us to hit the ground running. And he provided the best practice in terms of research-based strategies that we could employ in order to address the strategy, in order to address the needs with strategies that we knew made sense and that wouldn't escalate a further crisis. I'm not going to get into all of that this evening, but I wanted to let the board know that a discussion then took place about what are we doing in September when the students come back to school? You know that we've had crises before and we've reassigned mental health people so that we've had them in place in where they don't, not, it's not their normal assignment. But since it's the first few days of school, we really don't have a surplus of mental health staff. And that's when the discussion about lifespan was initiated. It's actually a really novel and interesting idea because there is no fee. It's voluntary. But as a district, we would have to train and commit one of our mental health people to this organization so that if there was a need and with Dr. Bossert's permission, we would then send one of our mental health staff to a neighboring district who is experiencing a crisis. The commitment on part of the mental health person that's been identified, we're very fortunate, Kristin Karch, our high school psychologist, has already been trained. So we are the 21st district to join. We are able to access these services immediately. They provide counseling to students. They will come into classrooms to do presentations. They will support the administration in terms of best practices on how to respond to community, parents, teachers, staff for a variety of crises. It doesn't have to be the crisis we're currently experiencing. It could be the death of a staff member or a student or some sort of natural disaster in the community or heaven forbid, a school shooting. But we would have access ongoing, moving forward, to a team of people so that we wouldn't be pulling our people from one of their assignments to be over at the high school to lend a helping hand. And the board should know that the people that are coming in are trained. So they've gone through a rigorous process. The trainees have to commit to ongoing training throughout the year. The locations vary from Nassau to Suffolk. But it allows not only for the person who is going to be providing the training to a neighboring district to remain current, it also allows this network of people to get to know one another because if they're deployed in the same school district, there's then a comfort level with the people that are working with the network.
Could you just give the board a little insight into our former Elwood faculty member who plays a large role in the formation of this community?
Oh, thank you. I didn't know if we had time. I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Pantolino, who was our psychologist over at the high school for 37 years, he's largely responsible for bringing this to Long Island, just like he was largely responsible for bringing natural helpers to Long Island. So he's played a large role. And if you look at your handout, you'll see that the Lindbrook address on the last slide. Dr. Pantolino lives in Lindbrook and that's his field box. I'm quite certain of it. But he's the person that when we called, he responded. He's already had some conversations, you know, with members of the team. And there's a real comfort level there. When we asked Dr. Bossert, you know, for his support, he approved it immediately. We haven't done, we haven't joined prior to this, even though Dr. Pantolino had encouraged us and Carrie can attest to this because the former superintendent felt as though we were too little to spare somebody. And he had said to Tony, you know, get a few more districts on board and we'll jump in, you know. But we didn't want to be one of the first because quite honestly, we don't have a surplus of mental health staff.
Nor do we currently. But to be part of a team of 21 districts and depending on the geographic location of where the tragedy may occur, we may or may not be called upon to lend support. Whether we belong to lifespan or not, if we can be of help and of service to a neighboring district, we will do all that we can to support them, which goes from providing mental health support after a tragedy to landing out of a football field because Northport's construction wasn't completed in time. We are all one big community of educators and when we can lend support to someone else in need, we will always do that. I understand the concern about it coming at the expense of our own students and faculty, which obviously was a concern that Mrs. Swaddle had. But I don't see that as a concern moving forward now that there are as many districts participating as there are.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking into this, Dr. Bossert and Mrs. Wilkinson. I think we can all support joining and especially the fact that folks will come in and educate and do some crisis prevention kinds of education really is meaningful to us as well. So I agree.
And to that point, Mrs. Green, one of the things that we were definitively focused on this year is prevention. Many student stressors and causes for anxiety and causes for depression and causes for just a lack of enjoyment and fulfillment about school. When we talk about this year focusing on the whole child, those are the types of conversations we were having. Reducing stressors, managing pressure, looking at social media influences. All those conversations are not new and certainly not new in Elwood. And this was the focus that we had always intended for the school year. It just became a little more clear about the urgency because of the events over the last few weeks.
Could I just add one other thing? And you need to know that the natural helpers program that's at the high school and the middle school is not a club. It really is a mental health network. And one of the things that the research points to clearly is students feeling connected. And the premise behind natural helpers is that in each school, there exists a natural helping network of kids. And kids go to other kids when they're in trouble, particularly at the secondary level. And the premise behind it is we're training those kids on how to respond, how to assess that somebody might be at risk and when to refer. And I don't want to put Mr. Tony on the spot. He was actually through both natural helpers at the middle school and at the high school. And I think he can attest to the fact, and I think that's why we have been so fortunate. Our students refer students all the time for all sorts of different emotional stressors. So I want to stress the importance of that program. It's really not a club. And it is a way of, you know, addressing the emotional needs of our students.
Any other things?
100% attest to that and it's a great moment.
We will continue our Mrs. Hall program and build from there. Any questions about any items covered during the discussion portion of this evening's meeting?
Okay, with that, we'll move on to financial matters. Can I have a motion to approve the budget transfers? Motion by Mr. Tomio, second by Mrs. Matt Malito. Questions, comments? All in favor? Four zero. We have a number of action items. Action item number one, can I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda as attached in tab C? Motion by Mrs. Matt Malito, second by Mr. Tomio. Questions, comments? All in favor? Four zero.
Mrs. Green, maybe we can pause there for a moment, please? I would like to commend the district administrative team on a tremendous amount of work that was completed over the summer and identifying some outstanding individuals to join the Elwood Knights beginning next week. New teacher orientation will be extremely well attended. And we've also hired a good number of new teacher assistants, custodian workers, power professionals, food service workers. We really have found some very highly qualified experienced individuals and some fresh faces as well to join the team here. And I am very excited to welcome them to the school community. I thank you for your support and your recommendations. And each person who was interviewed by me, who made tonight's agenda, I mentioned, you need not attend the meeting, but I encourage you to watch the live feed from home. So for those of you who've made it this far in our meeting and those of you who may be watching this tomorrow on the YouTube channel, congratulations and welcome officially to Elwood. And Mrs. Green, may I suggest that if it is approved by the board, you can do the rest of the agenda as a consent agenda if the board so...
Is there any objection to taking the rest of the items in aggregate? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the action items K2, the special education recommendations for student classifications and placements for those dates listed? To B, preschool special education recommendation, classifications and placements for those dates listed? The second reading adoption of charging school meals policy? The policy deletion of the Amos Program policy? The recommendation that the board adopt textbook, AP music theory textbook? And also the DASAC coordinators for 2017-18 in Harley Boyd? And the high school? Can I have a motion to accept? Well, oh, where's the middle school? Oh, and the business agenda as attached in tab H? Can I have a motion to, Mrs. Matt Malito makes the motion? Mrs. Marcus will second. All in favor? Four zero. No questions? Okay, there we go. Are there any items not listed on the agenda, Dr. Bossert?
No, I will just clarify a point. The reason why the board, the community listening, just deleted the honors program policy is not because we no longer have an honors program. It's because that policy was in direct conflict with the open enrollment policy that we now have in place.
So I guess I'll open it up to the second residence remarks. Remarks are limited to items voted on or discussed at the business meeting. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves in any organization that represented the meeting. Comments should be kept as brief as possible, may not exceed three minutes. Public discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others which of reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Anybody have any comments or resident remarks they'd like to share?
Go ahead, watch it, honey.
Okay, with that, can I have an emotion to adjourn the business meeting tonight? Mrs. Montalito, second by Mr. Tomio. All in favor? Four zero. Thank you. Thank you for attending.